Good evening, everyone. Tuesday, February 4th, meeting of the City of Placerville Planning Commission. I'm calling the meeting to order. Will you all please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
......................................................
Mr. Painter, will we please call the roll?
Chair Keeney?
Here.
Member Friend?
Greetings.
Member Lepper?
Here.
Vice Chair List?
Here.
Member Rains?
Here.
Moving on to the consent calendar, tonight we have approved the agenda and approved the regular meeting minutes. Do any of the commissioners want to pull either of those items? Anyone from the public having an issue on our agenda or the minutes? I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion at second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
For the record, Chair Keeney, Barbara Rains, did you second that motion?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry?
If you could pull the mic closer to you, that would be...
Oh, yeah. (Laughter).
And that little square button?
When I'm talking.
Yeah, just when you want to talk. Great, okay, we're all clear on the ground rules. I know some interest to the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Ask anyone from the audience who'd like to address the commission. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. If you would, please state your name for the record.
Kirk Smith of Placerville. I came to request that you consider promulgating specific rules related to applications for demolition permits and how you'd evaluate historic properties in the city. And in support of that, I have three documents presented. The first one was presented to you regarding 3095 Cedar Ravine. To the extent that was offered to suggest that it was a product of the Eldorado County Historical Museum, that's a fraud. It isn't. It had nothing to do with the museum or the museum staff. That's according to Mary Corey, the head of that. I don't think that was pointed out during the process, the last session. Carol Sexton, who sided there, said that the applicant prepared this. He told me in a phone call this week that he prepared it. And the reference to Carol Sexton, nobody at the museum knew that this was considered or offered until after the fact, and when they did, there was some concern about the misrepresentations. The second document is a document that was submitted by another applicant, and during the proceedings, there was nothing said about another application for the same property that had put in a bid on that property. And the reason it's relevant is because they submitted a detailed, point-by-point estimate of what it cost to restore the building. And the relevance of that is that you had somebody who, you know, seemed to have misrepresented the history or the source of the document, and then it's telling you that it had no historic, that it couldn't be restored. Mr. and Mrs. Rossi had turned in the application. Mrs. Rossi still works at Marshall Hospital. Mr. Rossi just retired. They have about 10 acres or more in Diamond Springs, and they want to downsize. So, they actually want to restore the building. The last document is to illustrate to you just how difficult it can be to do some of the research, because there's a couple photographs. And when you find them at the history museum, they're listed not by street addresses, because they didn't have street addresses or use them when the buildings were constructed. So, they're described by the name of the people last associated with it. But that's not always accurate, because in the case of the building that has all that gingerbread, the Victorian structure, that's described as the Kembellic Blair House, that was owned by Ingersoll, the Ingersoll family, who came here in the mid-1880s. That's what's on the official map for the town, the first one created in the 18, early, mid-1800s. So, there needs to be a specific standard that we know what we can count on in the future. It's ironic that the appeal filed by Jennifer Chapman required her to swear that everything she said was true. The applicant comes here and can give you all kinds of stuff, and it's not even going to be questioned. That's a little cockeyed. The article that was given to you last year by the staff said that in due process cases, that's what's recommended, that you have...
So, could you please reach your conclusion shortly?
In conclusion, when you have 20 minutes for an applicant who has incorrect information, and then you, someone who wants to question it, has only three minutes, that suggests a lack of balance. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the public hearing. Before us is site plan review 90-03-R, 2920 Cold Springs Road. Request for a major change to an existing site plan review for use of a 12-by-30-foot prefabricated recreational vehicle cover structure. I'll turn it over to Mr. Painter to give us the staff report.
Madam Chair, before you do that, because of the proximity to my residence, I will excuse myself from this proceedings.
Thank you very much. I'll give Commissioner List a moment to vacate the room.
I've got some ice cream.
Okay. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Painter for the staff report.
Thank you. The request this evening is made by Sean Stremssterfer. He's the co-owner of the commercial office property located at 2920 Cold Springs Road, which is at the intersection of Cold Springs Road, Middletown Road, and Sleepy Hollow Court. Mr. Stremssterfer seeks planning commission approval for the placement and use of a 12-foot by 30-foot recreational vehicle cover structure consisting of tubular metal construction with horizontal metal roof and side panels. This is on a site with an existing 1990 planning commission-approved site plan review, which is SPR 90-03. This structure has been placed within the southeastern portion of the approximately 0.8-acre site, within the existing parking area for the onsite office uses. The structure is set back 12 feet from the easterly property line and is approximately plus or minus 100 feet from Cold Springs Road, which serves as the north boundary of the site. The 1990 site plan review 90-03 involved the conversion of a single-family residence and site into office space, parking, and landscaping. This request tonight, if approved, would result in a major change to that site plan due to the introduction and placement of a new structure on that site. Attachment A of the staff report contains the applicant's submittal materials, which includes a detailed project description, building elevations and plan details, a site plan, several photos of similar vehicle cover structures that are surrounding the site as well as in neighboring locations. The applicant's rationale for the request approval tonight is that the structure's location within the site, its distance from Cold Springs Road, the site and neighboring landscaping, its color and its similarity with structures on neighboring property blends the structure into the surrounding site as well as the neighborhood improvements. As demonstrated by the applicant's photos of similar vehicle structures in the community, the ubiquitous nature of these and the existence of these types of structures is apparent within the community. Although the metal structure has limited outward aesthetic quality, staff concurs with the applicant's rationale, and it appears compatible with the site plan review design criteria within city code and the general plan's community design element as analyzed on pages five and six of staff's report. The request further is categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Equality Act as it involves an accessory structure. Staff recommends the commission conditionally approve this request tonight, and to assist the commission, beginning on page six and continuing to page eight, staff provided a recommended motion of action for your consideration tonight. The applicant is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much for your concise review of the issue before us. I had just one clarifying question about, on page seven of the staff report. I just want, Andrew, you had clarified this, and just want to make sure that we all understand that only a building permit is what would be required as a condition of approval of the accessory structure, as opposed to a building, construction, and encroachment permit.
Yes, the language on item, well, it's condition number five on page seven. It's kind of a boilerplate condition of approval. We put on most recent site plan reviews. It's kind of the practice that we do. So, yes, the words "encroachment permit" are mentioned in that condition. In this case, due to its proximity to a city-maintained street, no encroachment permit is necessary at this time. Staff would certainly encourage the commission to strike that particular phrase from that condition, if that, for clarity.
I appreciate you covering that for us. I got a little confused as I read through this, and thanks for clarifying that. It's just a building permit is what's required as...
Yes, correct.
...the condition of approval. And also, I just wanted to state for the record, on page eight of the staff report, condition of approval 9A through D, these are conditions that were already met with the 1990 site plan review. There's nothing left on that list to be done.
Yes, staff has daylighted that for not only the benefit of the commission to understand what was required of the applicant and his co-owner and the co-owner on the property when they converted the home, but also that those conditions remain still in effect and stay with the site plan review as it moves forward into the next phase of its existence there at Cold Springs Road.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying the nine, because that was one of the questions that we're just reaffirming the existing site plan.
Yes.
Perfect. And then, in the applicant's packet, it said that he intends to move the unit after three years. If the unit is removed, would the permit to have that unit in place still remain, or would the permit cease to exist should the one we're approving today be taken out?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Thank you for it.
(Laughter) Sorry.
With the structure being removed, then the necessitation of having the site plan review would go away. The city could come back before you to have this approval for that structure be formally taken out of the conditional aspect of the site, if that makes any sense. I'm not sure it made any sense to me.
So, that would just be kind of a housekeeping, kind of bookkeeping thing for the site plan review?
Yes, formally, we need, we, you would need to, if changes are made to the site, then the site plan needs to be kept up with those changes. So, the removal of the structure would also require a site plan review. In this case, it would be coming back to you as a removal of the tonight's approval.
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah, that makes sense. So, if, in fact, he does decide to move it after the three years, then that will be another, okay. Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Go ahead, Barbara.
On page eight, where it references an LPG tank, I'm assuming that means propane?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
On page eight, where it references an LPG tank, I'm assuming LPG stands for propane tank?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff at this time? Okay. If not, we'd like to have the applicant come up and give us a summary of your application, if you will. Good evening.
Good evening. Am I too close? I do want to make an apology. I took other individuals' comments regarding taking a permit out or not, and I assume because it's not considered a permanent structure in the sense that we have, I just went forward and had the structure applied to my property, when in fact, and the only reason why I did that is because I have another structure on the property to the west side of this that is actually a parking space, but it's a full structure. I had another RV that was placed in there. When I purchased this one two years ago, it was 12 inches higher, so I was gonna, I could not get it in the existing structure. I had a contractor come out with his engineer, and he said to re-engineer that, just to put that, he said it would cost you over $12,000 plus. He said, "Just get a structure." And he said, "That way, if you want to remove it when you leave," because I have plans, I have a home in Mendocino, and I have a plan eventually to make that my permanent residence. As it is now, I live a quarter of a mile from my office building, and so it's convenient. And also, I didn't feel that the structure was inclusive regarding everything around us. We, when I first took out this 1990 permit to accommodate that, we had to do extensive landscaping and meet all this criteria. And since then, we've had other structures like mine come up around me. In fact, my neighbor next door has the identical one, and I copycat-ed him because his house is the same color as my office building. So, we kind of did the coordination. And then I found out that he had not pulled a permit either, and he had to go through what I'm going through, but he told me that after the fact. And so, here I am, going backwards, addressing you, and pleading my case that I hope there's an acceptance. I did make some comments in my statement that if there was any further aesthetic value you want me to place on that. Andrew mentioned possibly painting the poles, because they're a chromatic color. Paint that into the trim color of my home. I'd be more than happy to do that. I would complete the side with wood siding. And one of the other issues that was brought up, that it's the material that's made out of a sheet metal and steel, and it's not conducive to the materials that are on my structure. Well, my other structure has a metal roof and a metal backing to it. It was built in the '50s from the Praz family. So, we, after the fact, to build a wooden structure, I know I would have had to got a permit for that, but I'm looking at $40,000, and it just wouldn't have been acceptable. I try to, I'll do what it takes to accommodate if there's any visual, but I think it's conducive. Maybe just paint the poles, and that's it. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope I get a unanimous yes.
I had, just wanted to ask you to elaborate a little bit on the painting. You also said something about wrapping the structure. That would be just a...
What I meant, there's seven poles, or eight, vertical, and they're just a steel, a tubular, and, well, actually, it's not tubular, it's kind of a rectangle box. And I'd be more than happy to wrap them with a wood and then paint them the trim of my house, of the office building.
Okay.
So, that's what I meant by wrapping the poles.
Okay.
And then, there's an exposure four or five feet, because I only did the roof and brought it down. If it meant to cover that, I personally think it would stand out more. My building doesn't stand out unless you actually pull in the parking lot and you see it, or if you're standing across the DMV waiting to get in line, you can see it. But outside of being obtrusive, I don't feel that way. I know there's other structures like mine in the community that look awful. They don't, they're not conducive to the area, but it is what it is. And so, that's...
Would you be able to paint, in your, I think it's the second picture you provided in your packet, it kind of shows a white car next to the structure. Would it be possible to paint? You can see it now in the sunlight, it's tan color.
Yes.
Would you be able to paint that? I'd like to match the siding of your building?
If you required me to bring it all the way down, I can match that color. Is that what you're asking me?
That's right.
Yeah, I can, yeah, it's custom color match if I had to do that.
Okay. I appreciate you being, actually proposing that to us and, you know, willing to work with us to make the structure blend a little bit more in the surrounding area.
Well, now, I'm, either way, I have this building. If it's not, if it's not approved, then I have to take it down at a large expense and accommodate something else, when I don't think it's that, it's important to me, but I can understand the...
Uh-huh. And I just wanted to follow up. I noticed in part of your package, you mentioned that you would be taking it down in a few years when you sell a property. Are you going to take it with you, or do you think...
Well, what I'm gonna do, I spoke to a gentleman that said he, they take them down and move them all the time.
Uh-huh.
And for a fee, they would take, drive it over to Mendocino and put it on my property over there.
Okay.
And my, I retired, I was a State Farm agent, 38 years in the community, and I retired two years ago, and we're planning on, and my partner's retiring the end of the year, and so, we're gonna put it on the market and sell it. We've been there enough, long enough time, and it really doesn't generate as much income as we wish it could, so...
The reason I asked about painting it and the wrapping, I hesitate to ask you to do, to invest more in this structure. It's still going to be a mental, open structure for RV, but if you are sure that you would be taking it with you, as opposed to it being an amenity that the next property owner might say, "Oh, I could park my RV in there."
Yeah, that's true.
But you're fairly confident that you want to take this with you when you...
Oh, yes.
...when you sell.
You know, I have $5,500 in it now. I mean, if I have to remove it now, I don't think I can get $500 for it, because it's labor-intensive. It's not the material. There's 15,000, I'm exaggerating, but there's probably 15,000 screws in that thing, and it took four men, two days to install this. So, it's labor-intensive.
So, it's valuable to you, because you've already invested...
Exactly.
...so much money.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Bring it back to the commission to discuss and possibly take action. I'll just start with my review of the issue. It's a post hoc, after-the-fact approval. We get these often. My...
Chair Keeney, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you close and open the public hearing? I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I just said, "Bring it back to the commission for discussion." So, I have to, I apologize for not formally stating that I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, before you close the public hearing, you might want to give members of the audience an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I think that's where Mr. Painter was going.
I got kind of confused. To me, this is a pretty straightforward issue, but you're right. I am not following the order. So, I'd like to open it up to any members of the public who'd like to comment on the proposal in front of us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I missed it, too, actually. Andrew had said something.
Okay, now, I'd like to bring it, close the public hearing portion of, or the public portion of this hearing, and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. So, we have this structure, it's been there for a while. My take on, I actually didn't have to go to a site visit. I happened to drive through that intersection. I got a disagree, it kind of, especially after the deciduous leaves, deciduous trees that lost their leaves, it kind of stood out to me this last, this fall, I noticed it. And I agree, you know, there are similar things. In fact, there's one almost, I guess it's perpendicular to it, and there are other similar structures up and down that commercial zone area. And in the submittal, there are certainly plenty of other examples throughout our community of a, of other temporary-looking RV structures that people have on their property. So, given that, you know, as far as the aesthetics and also the willingness to maybe paint it, I think we could soften the look and make it blend in a little bit better with the residential, it's a commercial, but it's a residence that was converted, and make it kind of blend in a little bit better with that site. So, that's my thought on this. I'd like to ask the other commissioners for their thoughts.
So, I kind of agree. I think it's pretty, an offensive structure overall. So, I think that just the painting that he suggested that would match the coloring of the building would be sufficient, and I think overall, it's a pretty nice looking structure. It's not, it doesn't look pieced together or anything, so, you know, and I understand that you don't know, and so you come ask, and you find out, and you come, and so, I think everything looks pretty good, my question about the permit, and now the applicant understands that he'll have to also deal with that at the wrap-up of whenever that is. Other than that, I didn't really have any significant additions or questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regards to the project specifically, no, and I agree with the, I can support the recommendations for the painting and the softening. I personally did not find any disharmony with the structure, particularly in the context from Dawson's all the way around to, say, Frank's Autobody, that whole area, it didn't cause me any concern whatsoever. Just tangential, I guess, and not something that needs to be a part of a motion, but to staff, the applicant did go through and through photographic, I hate the word evidence, but we'll use photographic evidence, or exhibits, showed a lot of not only rigid structures, but it's a lot of soft wall, tent-like structures that appear to be covering cars or whatnot, okay? And the question then is asked, in a lot of the photos that were offered, if they're permitted. So, I guess the question, and we can take this up actually under item eight, frankly, for further discussion, as to whether or not the permitting of these things and what is required to be permitted, and how do we let people know what they have to have a permit, you know, to put up? And then, I guess we only deal with it based on complaints, right? Because I've heard that before. Generally, our enforcement is complaint-driven. So, I may want to discuss that just a little bit under item eight, but I could support any motion. I could not find, and I looked, because I obviously missed it, but I could not find the encroachment item, so, but I assumed that...
I think, yeah, it's, there is not an encroachment issue, is that right?
Oh, item five, page...
Right.
Item, page five. Oh, there it is.
They're boilerplate, but not typically applicable here.
Oh, there it is. Boy, I was even looking for it, I can't see it. In any event, I presume a motion would take care of striking that language, as staff suggested, as well as addressing the painting component.
Okay.
So, I would presume if a motion comes, that you're gonna have to have those two specific items, in addition to all of the other petty fogery that we usually do here.
Petty fogery. Very nice. Commissioner Rains, any comments?
Well, I don't think it needs to be painted, and I do agree that he's got to do something about the parking lot, because I drove up there, and I drove in your parking lot, and I've got a small car, but I had to maneuver a bit. So, there's a little bit of work to be done in the parking lot, so cars can go up there and turn around and get back down again. But I don't, I think the painting, since he's going to move it in three years, I'm not necessarily anxious that he puts any more money into the project.
Okay. Yes, would you like to, please come back up to the, I'm not sure about the...
We have adequate parking space, however, one day a week, our tenant has a class, a religious class, and you had to be there on a Wednesday, because the rest of the time, that parking lot, it maybe has two cars. We have three parking facilities, stalls to the left where the tenants park, and only on Wednesday, and there's, and they, it's, they wouldn't have been able to park where that is anyway, because I used to have my camper and truck parked there. So, and I know what you mean. It's tight with, when they're there, and I'm talking about 10 to 12 cars, and we only have 14 stalls, I think, altogether, so...
And thank you for not alluding to my driving competencies.
As regards the adequate parking on, because part of the motion would be to incorporate... As regards the, the adequate parking on, because part of the motion would be to incorporate, well, now, the conditions nine A through D. And let's see, where is that?
Well, it's install number five, provide auto turnaround.
Auto turnaround. Okay.
But these are, I don't think, staff can correct me, but I don't believe we even have the privilege to revisit the previous
Is that correct, Mr. Painter? I think in your staff report, you emphasized that these conditions had been met previously.
We believe that they have been met.
Yeah, there was a statement.
If the commission feels that they, the, the structure is compromising the parking, then they could amend. This, this project opens up the site plan review, so really, all of these are fair game for adjustment.
Oh, they are. Okay.
Can I address that question? That turnaround originally on the, on our blueprints and so forth, it was all completed and approved by the city. However, at that time, that was where the handicap was going to be, at the south end of the property. And it was because of the elevation, we had to move it to the front of the building. So, that turnaround was no longer an issue. And so, it was a parking space. So, my motorhomes park there now. The other issue was the, we had to do it because of the garbage truck. Well, they don't drive up, they back up. And they've been backing up in that driveway for thirty-eight years, and they can't turn it while they could turn around. But, but that was the issue. That turnaround was what was for the handicap, and that was modified to the front.
Oh. Well, Barbara, do you want to amend the conditions of approval for additional parking or turnaround space?
No.
Okay. You're, you're satisfied that
I'm assuming it's me and my ability to back up and turn around.
And just your bad luck to be there when there happened to be a car parked.
Because I always go to every
I always go to every site on any planning commission agenda to check it out. And I, and I went up there and said, no, just, it's a mute point at this time.
Okay. So, you did a site, and
I did a site visit, and I didn't have any issues.
And Mr. Friend, did you do a site visit?
I did, and I had no issues with my large car.
Okay. I did not do a site visit for this. As I mentioned earlier, I happened to drive by last fall and notice that structure. So, for some reason, I'm the only one who kind of did a double take. Like I said, it was, I think it was around Christmas time, and I did happen to notice it. So, that's, that's why I would propose that we have him paint that to match the trim on the building, to see if it doesn't soften it a little bit for the sensitive receptors like myself who drive by here in the wintertime. I noticed, you know, when I looked through the pictures in the application packet, you know, when there are the leaves on the tree, it really does kind of, and when the RV is parked in there, too, it does, you know, kind of disappear. And I don't think it's fair to ask you to do too much more, because there are quite a few of these, you know, throughout our community. So, I would like to make the motion that we adopt the staff record. Let me turn here to the proper page, so I get all the details. Adopt the staff report as part of the public record and make the findings, findings one through four. Strike the word, the words "and encroachment" line, or in three-point-five permits. Applicant shall obtain all necessary appropriate permits prior to occupancy and payment of all required fees. Let's see, how can we fix that a little bit? Actually, I don't, let's just leave it open. At this point, you know, it could be, and we get into the permit process, I don't know. Do you think an encroachment permit might be necessary? We don't think so at this time, but I don't want to, you know, limit the inspectors or the, you know. So, I think I'll just have to read that with a little more generous eye, that that's just boilerplate language. And then, as conditions of approval, I would like to add nine-dash-E. That the, let's see.
Why don't you make it ten?
Just go ahead and make that ten.
It should be ten.
Okay. Because nine, that's incorporating the ones from the original site plan review.
That's correct, yeah.
So, we'll just add then, make that ten. Structure
Paintage to match trim of the building.
Polls shall be painted, the trim cobbler, and
Support poles shall be painted to match
Shall be painted the same color as the adjacent building.
Building trim, I believe.
Yeah, trim of the adjacent building. And I'll just, I'm happy with that.
Second the motion. I'd like to introduce just a friendly amendment, if I could, going back to item five, perhaps just to make that a little bit more palatable.
Page seven?
On page seven, item five. Including but not limited to applicable building permits.
Okay. I like that.
That way, it kind of covers everything that might be needed and enforcing. And you've struck "and encroachment," correct?
So, you would say
Or you, did you leave the "and encroachment"?
I did, because I didn't want to, you know, limit them.
I'm happy to say, but if we add "applicable," then if an encroachment permit is applicable, it can be applied. If other building permits are applicable, they can be applied, so.
If I can interject, I know, I know the director just did, while the motion was being made, I, I thought of a circumstance in which an encroachment permit would be necessary. And it has to do with one of the conditions of approval that was required back in nineteen ninety, and that's, that's involving street frontage improvements. Now, the applicant and the co-owner, they sign an agreement, basically deferring those improvements to some future time. Well, those, if the city were ever to call in that agreement,
Okay.
then encroachment permit would be required. So, I would almost say, let's leave it in, but
No, I think that's what we were saying. We were simply adding the word "applicable" to cover building and encroachment permits.
But categorically, this particular request would not trigger an encroachment permit.
Mm-hmm. And I had misunderstood. I thought that, yeah, it's the agreement. I thought that all of that had been completed, all the conditions from nineteen ninety, nine, nine A through D, but
Yeah, the applicant did have that, that agreement is recorded.
Thank you for that detail. So, Mr. Friend, could you just repeat your language one more time for me?
I just wanted to add, under item five
So, it would read
Just, it would simply read, I'm on page five, instead of item five.
Page seven.
Including but not limited to applicable building and encroachment permits. Just inserting the word "applicable" between the word "to" and "building."
Applicable building and encroachment. That way, we keep the word encroachment.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I accept that amendment. And we still have our second, I think?
I made the second.
You, oh, you made the amendment. Okay.
And then introduced this friendly amendment, which you took in a friendly manner.
So, we now have our motion and second, and, motion as amended. Mr. Friend, would you call the roll?
Any discussion?
Or call the
I'm sorry, maybe discuss, I don't know if there's, we have a motion on the floor. I don't know if anybody wants to discuss.
Any further discussion on that?
I just want to clarify that we're approving the staff report, inserting the word "applicable," but also mandating they paint it?
The poles. That's correct.
Thank you. I just want to clarify what I'm voting for.
Mm-hmm. So, that would be number ten at the end of the, listen.
Yeah.
And, and a friendly note, not necessarily an amendment, but I'm sure your intent was to approve the request. I think you started off by saying you were going to adopt the staff report.
Right. I got kind of hung up on that, didn't I?
Your motion is to approve the request, adopting the staff report.
The report, and then, right, the findings.
Everything else is good. You just didn't, yeah, there you go.
And the conditions of approval as, as amended with number ten, paint the trim on the structure to match the
Paint the supporting poles of the structure to match the trim on the building.
Okay. Very good. Now, I think we're ready to call the vote.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Aye.
Member Lepre.
Aye.
Member Rains.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's help working this to our agreement. Congratulations. Good luck with your project. Thank you for working with us. We appreciate that. We'll move on to number eight matters from commissioners and staff. Welcome back, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Lynn. List. I'm tired. Mr. List. Okay.
Right.
Michael, yeah, it was a mashup there.
So, Madam Chair, the only thing I wanted to bring up was based upon the last item and to staff. And as I indicated in my remarks, a lot of the photos had, and I'm looking at this one in particular, they're not numbered, but it's got a, kind of a tent-like structure, where there's a black, dark-colored vehicle on the side. And a few others, and it raises the question of what needs to be permitted, and is this, and if so, what needs to be permitted, and if so, is enforcement driven essentially by complaints? And the art, you know, I frankly don't know what is required to be permitted and what is not. There's a wide range of items here. Some appear to be on private property or residential property. Others seem to be on business property. Frank's Automotive is an example. I think it was a Dawson's, might even have been in the packet, if I remember correctly, so.
Yeah. Mr. Stremsterfer's photos did capture residential and commercial locations. In fact, I think there was one that was actually outside the city limits as well. The structure that is greater than a hundred and twenty square feet requires a construction permit or a building permit through, through the city. That process involves the submittal of plans to our building department.
Could I, could I stop you just, so even if it's a temporary, like a tent that you put up, it's, it's simply the square footage?
Correct.
And, and so, it doesn't have to be secured to the ground, fastened? If it's just, I put up this tent, and if it's a hundred and twenty square feet or more, or I guess a hundred and twenty point, whatever,
Yeah.
that requires a permit?
Technically, it would.
Okay?
Are we, are we going around looking at tent structures? Not necessarily. And this particular structure tonight is really a more of a permanent install, due to the man-hours that, that the applicant explained. And, and its size dimensions, of course, require the permit. The applicant, in this particular case, because it, it's a commercial property, it goes through the process that you just went through with the applicant. For a residential placement, we don't have such a regulation unless it was in, unless it's within a historic district, or maybe the site is historic. But we don't, it still requires a construction permit, but it wouldn't necessarily go through site plan review through the commission. The plan submittal, the applicant, in fact, the applicant tonight will need to submit plans for the construction, for us to, to review how it's anchored to the ground. It doesn't fly away during wind events. Doesn't, it's, so it's secure. If the location was within a flood plain, then there are other issues that we would look at from that perspective. But generically, or generally, that's, that's the process.
I would just add that your comment regarding code violations being complaint-driven. Staff is a little bit more proactive when it comes to structures and construction activities without a permit. So, if staff just happens to be driving around, and we see a structure, and we know there wasn't a permit obtained to construct that building or structure, we will then proactively initiate a code enforcement on, on that property. And as Mr. Painter pointed out, it has to do with health and safety, especially with these larger prefab cover structures. In a wind event, they can certainly be picked up and moved. That could, that could harm somebody if they happen to be standing by, especially in a commercial application such as this. You know, you have customers coming and going and that sort of thing. But, but typically, we are complaint-driven, because we have a lot of complaint code enforcement activities working on. But if it's health and safety, or if it is a violation of the building code, we will typically be proactive and, and try and initiate compliance.
Any other matters from the commissioners for the staff? Okay. Staff, anything you want to bring to our attention tonight?
Yeah, I've got five items tonight. Item number one, just want to alert the commission that the city staff has done final inspections on a few projects that came before you in times past. So, the exterior lighting for the Placerville Orthodontics project off of Washington Street, that has been final, finalized, and I believe they're, they're starting occupancy. The, you probably have noticed that the roof material changeout at the Hangtown Village Square on Broadway. That's been finalized, and it looks, it looks fantastic. And also, the Neiman's Auto Touch Building. I believe it was last week, we did the final inspection and provided a certificate of occupancy for, for that structure. Item number two, we do, and we have noticed, you probably already received the public notice for the February eighteenth meeting. We will have two public hearing items. A historic district review for a project on Sacramento Street involving siding and window replacement, and a second public hearing regarding sidewalk dining, a temporary use permit request for the Bene Ristorante Italiano at four twenty-three Main Street. Item three, this was talked about earlier by a speaker this evening. An appeal was filed regarding the planning commission's last action on January the seventh regarding the, the project at thirty ninety-five Cedar Ravine, site plan review nineteen dash zero five. That item will be heard by city council on February the twenty-fifth, so three weeks from tonight in this building. I, I was mistaken. I don't have
Sorry. Did you say February twenty-fifth?
February twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I was mistaken. I don't have five items. I only have four. We did pass out tonight a flyer for a very upcoming Planning Commissioners Academy. I had a chance to speak with Director Evas just before the meeting in the office to see if we have budgetary funds for, for you guys to attend. And Pierre has, has looked into that and can provide you with a little bit more details. But the deadline to register is a week from tonight. So, I apologize for the late getting this out to you. We just got this email today. So, Pierre, maybe you can elaborate on, on the budgetary amounts we have and et cetera.
So, we do have monies available to send you to this conference. We probably could afford to send up to three to do the entire conference, and that would, and we would still have funding available to pay for the, the fuel and the meals costs. But we could probably afford to send probably four, possibly five of you if it was for one, one day.
With my apologies, I cannot make any of the conference, so I'm out of the running. So, you guys are
Yep.
No, no lodging.
No lodging.
It's in Sacramento, so the city won't pay for lodging.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
So, if, if any of you were interested, please get back to myself or Pierre this week, so we can make those arrangement, arrangements to get you registered. Thank you. Director Evas, do you have any announcements?
Nothing else. Thank you.
No other matters from staff for the commission. Okay. Thank you very much. It is six fifty, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, members of the public, for coming out tonight.